V Antoine Nemme et al. Santa Barbara County Superior Court Case Number 23CV05070. Seeing no one rise, we will close oral communications for closed session. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM for a joint planning commission and city council meeting, followed by the regular session of the Lompoc City Council at 6:30. Good evening. We'll reconvene the Lompoc City Council and ask the Madam Clerk for roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball, absent. Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Cordova?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here. Mr. Malavi, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, the council met to discuss the two items on the closed session agenda in closed session, and council gave direction to staff on both those items, but there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the invocation by Pastor Nate Marsh, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. While God so much is outside of our control, we acknowledge that we are limited and finite, but you aren't. And you created this world, you sustain it, and we trust in you to care for your creation, including us. And you gave us authority and responsibilities, so help us to faithfully care for those responsibilities. God, I thank you for this council who take care and responsibility for our city and our collective needs, give them wisdom and direction, strengthen them so they serve well and serve with honor, and watch over their families, protect their steps. Let their words encourage goodness and humility. Make them examples of unity and sacrificial service for all to follow. Bless those who work for the city and guard its organization and peace. Watch over our justice system, our judges and our police. Make them blameless and strong. Direct them to squash wickedness. Protect them. Give them courage as they face some of the most desperate situations in our community. Thank you that we can speak to you, God. Reveal even more of your goodness and your ways to us, and may your glory shine from the success and the prosperity of our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's proclamation is regarding Women's Veterans Day. Whereas President Harry S. Truman signed into law the Integration Act on June 12, 1948, enabling women to serve as permanent regular members of the Army, Marine Corps, Navy and Air Force. And whereas women veterans are one of the fastest-growing demographics within the United States military and are expected to reach nearly 20% of the veteran population by 2045. And whereas She Raised Her Hand, a collaborative initiative, was formed in Santa Barbara County to provide opportunities for women veterans in Santa Barbara County to find community, purpose, and strength in their identity as veterans. And whereas Santa Barbara County is home to women veterans who have served our country with honor and dignity, often in dangerous situations, including service in World War II through the current conflicts. And whereas through their selfless sacrifice, courage, dedication, and honorable military service, women veterans have safeguarded our heritage and freedom while providing valuable service and expertise to our society. And whereas women veterans have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also at the forefront of numerous major progressive social change movements in history, paving the way for future generations to enjoy the unalable rights, duties, and responsibilities afforded equally to all residents of the United States. And whereas each woman veteran is extraordinary in her own way, proving that women working inside the home or outside in academia, science, technology, business, labor, governance, and more, maintain critical roles in every sphere of society. Whereas Lompoc is committed to the supporting and recognizing the bravery of all women veterans, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their lives to protect our state and country, now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim June 12, 2024, as Women's Veterans Day in the City of Lompoc. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, City Council, for this recognition. My name is Allison Wales, and I serve on the Commission for Women for Santa Barbara County, and we were the ones that brought a little bit of seed money back last fall to this collaborative to have this idea germinated and informed, and we have an amazing group of ladies now. I'd like to say that Women's Veterans Day on June 12 commemorates the anniversary of the 1948 Women's Armed Services Integration Act signing. In 2024, it is the 76th anniversary of that groundbreaking legislation for Americans' military women, granting women a permanent place and opportunity for career in the nation's military. As of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act, a pivotal moment in granting women a permanent place in the U.S. military. While it is not nationally recognized yet, many states and organizations honor it. The Military Women Memorial hosts celebrations acknowledging the service of around 3 million women who have served this nation. She Raised Her Hand Initiative in Santa Barbara County aims to support women veterans by providing them with a sense of community, purpose, and strength. It's a collaborative effort led by the Santa Barbara County Commission for Women, recognizing the unique experiences and needs of women who have served in the military. Through various activities like networking, mentorships, and community partnerships, the initiative highlights the valuable contribution of women veterans in this county. We're also collaborative with the Santa Barbara County Veterans Collaborative and Hancock College, Blessed Hancock College. And now I'd like to introduce a few of our women.
Sorry. My name is Rebecca Martinez. I served in the United States Marine Corps from 2005 to 2010.
Hi. My name is Marisol Kigembe. I did six years in the Air Force.
Thank you.
For those of you who are out there or who are listening and you know of any women veterans, whether they be 80 years old or 20 years old, please look up She Raised Her Hand in Santa Barbara County. We're brand new. We're still revamping the website, but we've had a great donation by the Women's Veterans and Culinarians in San Ynez. And there's a lot of wonderful opportunities that will be afforded to our local veterans. So please look us up, and we thank you for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Albro, City Manager's Report, please.
You betcha. Get you right. So we're going to have some sidewalk repairs being done. You'll see some sidewalk closures, also some lane closures between Pine and College. Be patient. It's definitely needed. We are hoping to get that done before Flower Festival. Next slide. Wanted to let everybody know the brush truck did its maiden voyage and went out for the first time, did a fire response, and the crew went out there to Nukiyama, so thank you guys for doing that. It's good to see that out and working. We also got some of the EV charging stations at the corporate yard set up. We're going to be required by, well, right now, to do 50% zero emission by 2027. We'll be required to do 100%. So we're getting the infrastructure laid down. Also wanted to recognize the urban forestry for the 2023 Tree City USA Award by the Arbor Foundation. Appreciate those guys. They've got like 13,000 trees that they have to maintain, and they do a great job. People are always complaining there's not things for kids to do. This summer, we'll have a summer drop-in camp for kids 6 through 12, from June 12 through August 9. And it's between 12:15 and 5:15. It's $30 a week at the Anderson Rec Center, so something for the kids to do. And real quick, we have some art that's being displayed at the Grossman Gallery. We've got a real quick video we'll play here of some of the stuff that the inmates did. Encourage you to go out and look at it. Got some really good talent there. That's all I have.
Thank you for that. Any questions for our City Manager? All right. Seeing none, we'll go on to Consent Calendar. We will take items 1 through 7 unless an item is pulled, so we will believe there is an item that may need a statement read before public comment or after. Nothing? We're good? Okay. All right, then we will open the floor for public comment on Consent Calendar for items 1 through 7. If you'd like to speak, you may come to the podium for three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anyone rises or calls, I will read the process into record. All items listed on our Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we'll close public comment on Consent Calendar, and I will ask council if there's an item they'd like to pull or if they have any questions on item 1 through 7. And if not, a motion. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make a motion that we accept.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes for zero. And now we'll have a staff presentation from our librarian about the upcoming Public Library Summer Reading Program.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. I'm so excited. This is the best time of year at the library. We have a lot of fun. Please come on by. We have our annual summer reading program that's running from June 1 to July 31. And our theme this year is Read, Renew, Repeat. So we are, again, aiming for 100,000 minutes read. You can do it. You did it last year. I was going to raise it, and then I was worried. So 100,000. If we get more, I'll be really happy. Everybody gets a free book for signing up. This is from babies, so if you're reading to your baby, you can get a free book for them all the way up through adults. We have chances to win prizes all month long or all two months long. And to win the grand prize or to be entered in the grand prize drawing, you just need to read 600 minutes, which is about 10 hours. Some of the grand prizes we have, we have an iPad for adults, teen prize, we have a Stanley Cup, and some other fun goodies. Youth prize, a Kindle Fire tablet. And for early learners, which is those that are not quite reading yet, we do have a word building set for them. So why do we talk about reading and have a summer reading program every year? Part of it is to help kids and teens retain what they have learned over the school year and not slide back during the summer months, but also to support a literate community. The more people that kids have in their lives that are reading, the more likely they are to read. When you read, you tend to stay out of trouble, so I know that PD likes that. We also provide access to free books and programs to enrich our community, so lots of fun things. This year, we have, the zoo is coming with some animals. We're going to have some adult craft programs, some fun teen stuff, lots of good. Last year, we had over 300 participants, and they read over 280,000 minutes. So I guess I really should have upped that goal.
So just put out the challenge to beat that.
I know. I know. We've got to try to beat that this year. Wow. We gave away over 1,000 books, and all of that is funded either through grants or through the Friends of the Library. We had 22 programs with over 2,400 participants, which is great. And we also served 750 lunches to kids in our community. So how to sign up? We have the app, the Beadstack app. If you're not familiar, you can always come in, and we will help set you up. Or if you like paper, we will get you a piece of paper so you can sign up that way, too. You earn a free book for signing up. And then again, if you're logging, you're reading, you get chance to earn lots of fun prizes. So we have our events, they're listed on our webpage, but they're also, follow us on social media if you want to see what's happening every day. We also, if you have a kid that's going to school, they should have gotten one from the school district with all of the activities we have for them. So lunch at the library. We are going to, once again, be serving lunch for kids 0 to 18 every day, well, Monday through Friday, from 1 to 2. These, you don't have to sign up, you don't have to have ID. You just come in, get a lunch. They're all healthy, they're all with the Lompoc Unified School District. They prepare them, they train us on how to serve them, and then we serve them. So come on in. And one of the fun things this year that we got with this grant was teen interns. So we actually received some grant funding for a couple of teens to work during the lunch at the library. So they're learning how to help with kids, they're learning how to serve the lunches, they're learning how to do other library-related activities. They got to go through the whole process, too. So they did interviews. Everybody who applied, we interviewed, just to give them that experience. And so we're really excited to have two little employees this year. The program does run, the Lunch at the Library runs June 17 through July 31. Okay, and so did you know some of the fun things that we have to check out in our Library of Things? We have California State Library Parks Pass. So what that is, is a pass so that you can go to a state park like La Parisima and not have to pay the parking. So these are, we have these through the end of the year. They are, we have about 20 of them, so chances are good that you'll be able to get one if you walk into the library. It also can be used throughout the state of California, so if you're going down south, there's lots of places to use them. We also have a couple of Moxie Museum passes for the museum in Santa Barbara. Those were purchased with funds from the Friends of the Library, and they're good for two adults and five children to get in free. Something fun to do during the summer for kids is Discovery Museum meant for children. It's pretty amazing. I took my niece and nephew, and I loved it. We also have a Lompoc Museum Pass, so you can check that out and have free entrance to the Lompoc Museum. So again, those are at the library. You can check them out. You can go online, put a hold on it. The Moxie Museum Pass does have holds on it, so it might take a little while before you get one. But we do have three in circulation. We also have our sidewalk story, just reminding you, we've had this going for several months now, but every month we have a new story. It's bilingual up at Beatty Park, and it provides an opportunity for families to read together and to get some physical activity and sunshine, hopefully. I put that question mark because it hasn't really been very sunshiny, I feel lately. We've had a lot of clouds and stuff, but it is a good chance to get outdoors, read a good book. And then I wanted to say thank you to our sponsors. We do have some sponsors in the community that have provided prizes for different adult, either the adult reading program or the kids' reading program. So Albertson's, Capulon Eats and Provisions, the Friends of the Library, and Surf Connection. Thank you very much for being community sponsors. And if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
I just think it's fabulous that you do this every summer and that we keep seeing the numbers exceeded for your challenge. So I hope we can see 300,000 minutes of reading this summer. Again, I would tell the story often, I spent many of my summers in a library because I grew up without air conditioning, and it instilled a lifelong passion of reading, and so I highly encourage everyone to take advantage of our fabulous library and staff. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Now's your opportunity for oral communication on city matters that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to an item, you have three minutes. You may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consejo Municipal. Mi nombre es Araceli Contrera. Soy residente de Lompoc. Estoy aquí hoy para expresar mi apoyo a la implementación de una política de áreas libres de humo al aire libre. En el futuro cercano, esto será un paso positivo hacia un lompoc más saludable y limpio. Beneficios para la salud. Implementar una política de áreas libres de humo al aire libre mejorará significativamente la salud pública al reducir la exposición al humo de segunda mano, que se sabe que causa varios problemas de salud, incluyendo problemas respiratorios, enfermedades cardiovasculares. Las colillas de cigarrillos son una de las formas más comunes de basura. Una política libre de humo ayudará a mantener nuestros parques, playas, y espacios públicos más limpios, reduciendo la degradación ambiental y protegiendo la vida silvestre. Crear áreas libres de humo al aire libre mejorará la calidad de vida de todos los residentes, especialmente las familias con niños pequeños. Asegurará que nuestros espacios públicos sean seguros y acogedores para que todos los disfruten. Creo que una política de áreas libres de humo al aire libre será beneficiosa para el bienestar de nuestra comunidad, especialmente para nuestras generaciones más jóvenes. Gracias por su tiempo y consideración.
Thank you. So I'll be translating for her.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Araceli Contrera, and I am a resident of Lompoc. I'm here today to express my support for the implementation of a smoke-free outdoors ordinance in the near future. This will be a positive step towards a healthier and cleaner Lompoc. Some health benefits are implementing a smoke-free outdoors policy would significantly improve public health by reducing exposure to secondhand smoke, which is known to cause various health issues, including respiratory problems and cardiovascular diseases. Environmental impact. Cigarettes are one of the most common forms of litter. A smoke-free policy will help keep our parks, beaches, and public spaces cleaner, reducing environmental degradation, and protecting wildlife. Family-friendly atmosphere. Creating smoke-free outdoors areas will enhance the quality of life for all residents, especially families with young children. It will ensure that our public spaces are safe and welcoming for everyone to enjoy. I believe that a smoke-free outdoors ordinance will be beneficial for the well-being of our community, and especially for our younger generations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll close oral communications. Before we move on, Ms. Alarcon, don't we have a smoke-free policy in our parks already? Okay, that's what I thought. All right. Next item is item number eight, Review of the Lompoc Police Department's 2023 Annual Military Equipment Report, Community Engagement Session, Annual Renewal of Ordinance Adopting the Lompoc Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy and Inventory Pursuant to AB481. And I see that not our chief will be making the presentation.
Not the chief.
But our Captain Arias will be doing the presentation.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about our military equipment and our yearly obligation to Assembly Bill 481, which the police department publishes every piece of equipment that can be considered military-grade or used for that purpose. According to 481, the list of our equipment is published publicly. It's on our website, along with our department policy manual, on which military equipment would fall under Department Policy 709. This year, we have less gas munitions, and those are because the storage time capacity for that equipment to be effective wears out, so you have to get rid of it and order more. But other than that, we haven't bought any new rifles, any new, any of this equipment. We haven't bought any of it. So there's no change from last year to this year, other than less gas munitions, because some of our gas has reached its expiration date where it's no longer effective, or it may not work at all, and that's not the intended purpose, especially with legislation regarding use of less lethal or using other means of force. So we don't want to use a bunch of canisters that don't work, and then you deal with the opposite. So I'm here to answer any questions, if anybody has any. If the council has any questions, I look forward to them, and I can answer them for you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Starbuck?
There's a couple of sporting rifles that you list in here, and I'm wondering why you're calling them military weapons?
We don't get to pick what's called military weapons, the state and...
Oh, they get to make it up, then?
Yes, sir.
I got you. And the gas canisters, we're not buying them. That means we can use that money and buy books for the library. That saves, the librarian said, kids like books, and they stay out of trouble.
Or we can use... Never mind.
I don't know. We could give rides on the brush truck. We finally got to use it.
Every little bit helps.
No, well, thank you, Mr. Arias. This is, like I say, good things.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega?
Chip, so there's expiration dates, just like food and all this stuff, right? I mean, it's, I mean, it's pretty important, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the shelf life typically is about five years. In the recent past, we've only used those when assisting other agencies for events like social disruption down south. They tend to be used as a diversion or a way to force people out without engaging in a deadly confrontation. So they're very important to functioning and getting people to come out of confined spaces when there's a danger to the public, and they kind of help us to not create our own exigencies. So it's important that we do buy that stuff. Next year, the number will probably go up because it's in our next budget to order some more. But, you know, foreseeing the future, there might be some indications that there might be some type of public disruption somewhere else where we have to go help. So they're very useful for those type of purposes. You'll see, we also use 40-millimeter launchers, and those are to use impact munitions that are rubber as opposed to using something that is less lethal, it's not going to, you know, harm somebody till they die, and there's other means to doing that. On top of all these type of things, we've also, we're ahead of the game on all of our perishable skills training that talks about use of force and using less lethal, less lethal, and de-escalation tactics. So we're ahead of the curve. Every two years, you have to have four hours of training on just hands-on and verbal communication, and we're moving that to every two years, doing eight hours, just so we're more proficient.
Thanks. Thanks for that great explanation. You've got to have, you've got to be able to trust your equipment, so I got you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you for that. We'll take public comment on this as part of the public and community engagement session. So if you would like to speak on this item, you may come to the podium and/or call in at 805-875-8201, and you have three minutes to speak. Well, we give it enough window to the radio and TV listeners. I would just say, to add to the traffic concerns with repairs on H Street, this next couple of weeks, this week, we have several events going on in the community. We have graduations from several high schools in the area. We have the lifecycle ride arriving on Thursday and departing on Friday. So remember to be kind with each other regarding traffic, regarding getting in and out of restaurants, whether you're going for a graduation dinner or you run into... or you run into some of the cyclists visiting our community. Both have visitors from out of town, whether they're coming in to watch family graduate or you're part of the cycling crews coming through for the lifecycle ride. And remember, the kinder we are to each other, the smoother that traffic backup and frustration and wait will go, and reflect positively on us for those visiting and wanting to come back. All right. Seeing no one rise and no one comment on item number eight, I will bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion to accept. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make that motion to, to approve.
All right. Councilmember Cordova?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. And that passes for zero. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Councilmember Vega, anything to report?
Nothing.
All right. Councilmember Cordova?
No reports.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
All right. I already mentioned graduation and the lifecycle ride coming through town, but I'm gonna reiterate, remember, be kind. Juneteenth celebration will happen in Old Town on the 15th. That's a Saturday. It will start at 11:00 a.m. and run until 5:00 p.m. I, it's a free event. I encourage everybody to come out. It's a great fun, and this will be the second year in Old Town, fourth year of its existence. So lots of fun to be had. I attended the California's Association of Community of Governments on behalf of Santa Barbara County area governments two weeks ago, as well as Northern California Power Agency, our public power agencies meeting. I attended the Memorial Day event put on by Post 211, as well as all the other veterans organizations in town. And Councilmember Vega joined me that day, as well as Lieutenant Colonel Doug Scheis from Vandenberg. So we really appreciate him coming into town to do the speech. I attended Futures Certification for Customer Service Readiness Academy, and it has grown. It is now in their third year, and it was the largest graduating class that they've had so far. So that, that group is doing amazing thing. We had our monthly meeting for the Lompoc Community Benefit Foundation meeting. I was invited out to Vandenberg as part of a Women in Economic Development mentoring event. So I really want to thank them for the opportunity to speak with the young women in the military that were curious about what might they do after military life. And, and one of those included potentially running for elected office. And then attended the first Lompoc Community Chamber of Commerce's Economic Development Committee's preparatory meeting for their new design. And that first meeting, I believe, is scheduled for August 26th, if I remember the calendar right. So the last thing I have is a quick council request. We have the Flower Festival coming up. And the festival organizers were so excited and loved having one more float and loved having us have a float. They were hoping that we would. So I preemptively said yes. And so I'm just looking to get your agreement to participate in a float. I've wrangled our city manager and his truck and trailer once again. And so I'm looking forward to you guys saying, sure, I'd love to ride in a float easier than trying, finding a car to cruise in.
I would support that.
Awesome. Come on, Councilmember Vega. You know you did it at Christmas, and it was a blast. Councilmember Starbuck?
I don't know. You guys make big targets out there.
It's, 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 it's space-themed, so we, we should be a target. Come on.
I'll ride in the front with Dean.
You can ride in the truck with Dean. But I, it would be lovely to have you along because last year, it started out with three of us being available, and then Councilmember Vega joined us at Christmas, and so you're the lone holdout. So woo, I got him committed to riding the truck. Maybe we'll get him out on a hay bale. All right. Thank you for that.
Something better not happen to Mr. Albro, or I'll be driving.
All right. We will adjourn to the next Lompoc City Council meeting at 6:30 p.m. on June 18th, 2024.